Welcome to the regular meeting of the Lakeport City Council. Hi, everyone. Woo, we got a wild crowd tonight. Welcome to the meeting for Tuesday, May 2nd. Roll call.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Spur?
Present.
Councilmember... Parlett?
Here.
And Mayor Matina?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. Chief, would you lead us today?
Yes. I begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you are here to speak on a certain item, please wait for that item to be called. If you'd like to talk to us about something else, there's some slips up front to fill out and bring those on up. Next, we have the consent agenda. We're going to waive the reading of the ordinances except by title. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped ahead. First, we're going to have acceptance of the agenda. Sorry about that. Do we have any urgency items?
No.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, the consent agenda. We're going to waive the reading of the ordinances except by title, approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of April 18th, approve the warrant register of April 24th, approve application 2017-019 with staff recommendations for the Westside Community Park Committee's 5K fun walk run on May 28th, approve the application 2017-020 with staff recommendations for the 10th Annual Lake County AIDS Walk on September 9th, 2017, accept the construction of the Lakeport Police Department Acquisition and Improvement Project, and authorize the city manager to file a notice of completion, and adopt a resolution accepting the Lakeport Downtown Improvement Project Phase 2 Bid 1601 as complete, and authorize the city manager to file a notice of completion. Anyone want to discuss anything? Anyone from the public? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as posted. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have citizen input. Thank you. First, we have Ken Wicks. Junior Giants baseball. Hello, Mr. Wicks.
Hello, everybody. Tonight, I stand before you as the Vice President of the Lake County Sheriff's Activities League. We do all kinds of activities for kids around county, including boxing, kayaking, and drama, and all kinds of stuff. And one of our bigger programs is the Junior Giants. And I want everybody to know that signups are ongoing at this moment. It's a non-competitive league. It lasts eight weeks, starting on June 13th. It goes two nights a week, from 6:00 to 8:30 over at the Mountain Vista Middle School, all four fields, and it's for ages 5 to 18. If you don't have a glove, the San Francisco Giants provide you with a glove. We give you a hat and a shirt. You get a team, and you get involved in eight weeks of programming, from anti-bullying to health, to competence, to reading, and you get all kinds of benefits, like possibly going to a ballgame or two, depending upon what happens. It's a real fun atmosphere for all the kids, and at the end of the year, we have a huge barbecue and water balloon fight. And I encourage everybody who's into baseball and just having fun to come on out. Nobody needs to know how to play this game. It's all about having a good time. So, how you can get ahold of us and sign up is you can go through the Sheriff's Department's website, you can go to juniorgiants.org, the website, you can go to our Facebook page, Junior Lake County Sheriff's Activities League, or you can get ahold of Dan Camacho at 707-349-2484, or you can get ahold of me at my number, 707-245-8317. And I encourage everybody who wants to have some fun this summer to bring out their kids and have a good time.
So, Ken, I always thought that it was just to play baseball.
No, it's an actual, it's a program for character development. It's designed, it's been going now 20 years, and it's been designed by child psychologists to improve the lives of inner-city youth, and it's turned into a huge, huge program where there's not only California, but parts of Nevada. We have over 220 leagues, 25,000 children, and the basis for it are the four bases of character development, which are competence, integrity, leadership, and teamwork. And through that reinforcement, we use the game of baseball to teach them those principles of character development. So, they need to learn how to play the game, they learn how to use effort, learning, and make mistakes, and have fun, and because it's non-competitive, it's all about encouragement. All the coaches, all the team parents are background-checked, no one's allowed on the field but us. We have, the San Francisco Giants give us an ambassador. They track everything that we do, from the reading programs, to the health programs, to the success of each child, and at the end of the year, we get a ranking on this matrix. And I'm pleased to say that Lake County is in the top 5% every year for the 220 leagues all around the state. And we get benefits like going to the community fund luncheons, which we've been privileged to do the last two years, where each child gets paired up with a ballplayer for the day for their large fundraising. And we sent 11 kids this year, we sent 11 kids last year. So, it's a real good program, and they get to learn how to read, they get lots of prizes, they get lots of fun, they make a lot of friends. So, it's all about positive reinforcement and encouragement. So, again, I encourage everybody to, if you have a child that's interested in playing and having some fun and maybe learning a few things, come on out and have some fun with us.
Yeah, that's amazing, and thank you to the Junior Giants for bringing in the motivational speaker, Michael Pritchard, to the schools. That was really great for the school.
Yeah, that was really fantastic. Michael Pritchard, for those who don't know, is, he does voice-overs for Star Wars amongst other things. He's a comedian, but he's been around quite a long time. And his specialty is going to speaking, going to groups and speaking about life, anti-bullying, and various things. He goes from the schools, to the prisons, to the police departments, the FBI, he was all over the country, speaking on behalf of anti-bullying. And because he was with the Junior Giants, we were fortunate enough to have him come up last year to do a presentation for us. So, being that we have good contact with the Giants, we put in a request to have him come up to see if he could do a show or two, and we were fortunate to have him do the entire Lakeport school. Our thought at this point is to get funding to bring him up every year to hit all of the different schools, if we can, Kelseyville, you know, Lower Lake, and Middletown, and over Neeson, possibly Upper Lake, you know, together. And so, we're in the process of writing grants to get that in motion, because it really was a very powerful day, and I think the kids got a lot out of it, and I know we did, and it, we've heard nothing but great things, so.
He was the keynote speaker for us at a League of California cities meeting a few years back in Los Angeles, and Margaret and I came back, and we were really hoping to try and get him in the school. Had it on my to-do list, and then saw it in the newsletter, he was coming, so.
Yeah, and then he does like Lake County, he's familiar with Lake County. At one point, he spent a lot of time up here, knew quite a few people, including a former police chief. So, he has a real strong feeling for this, for this area, and a nicer guy we couldn't have found to present. So, we're really pleased that that worked out very well. So, we're crossing our fingers we can bring him back next year, and he's willing, so. It was great.
Thanks, Ken.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dennis Rollins.
Hey, I thought since we had some things on the agenda, I'd just take a few minutes to give you a little update on what's going on at the park.
Permit.
You know, we're in the, at the Jane Barnes Field, we're in the full swing, we have a west shore little league there. They're using the field for baseball and for softball, and I've talked to several softball coaches, and, you know, they, he said, "Girls have just been stuffed off in the corner of the fairgrounds." So, the girls are so excited to have a nice field to play on, so they're really, they're really happy about that. We have the Ukiahman Soccer League is playing on Sundays out there. They take the baseball fences down and use the whole area, have a regulation-sized soccer field. That brings in, we have three Lakeport teams that are in that league, and so that brings in folks from Ukiah, and I think they go as far as Laytonville or something, so they come here to play on our fields. And then, of course, we'll have soccer when fall gets around, so. That's what's going on up there right now, and the big thing that's going on is we just finished construction of the pump track. I think the last time I was here, I told you that we were going to be doing it, and here's a picture. Satellite photo, it looks like, taken by a drone.
One second.
And for those of you out there, there's a picture on the back table. So, we're pretty excited to have that, just finished it on Friday, and already, one of the coaches from the combined Clear Lake High, Kelseyville High mountain bike team was out there yesterday when I was out doing something else, and he said, "Well, I'm just riding it because we're going to bring the teams out here so that they can practice skills." He said, "This is a really good kind of a course to practice skills on."
Nice.
So, that's, we're very excited about that, and we'll try to, oh, I should thank the Rotary Club of Lakeport, $7,500 donation to help fund that project. We appreciate that very much. And then, two more things. You just approved on your consent agenda our two-mile fun walk and run, so just in case you're looking for something to do on Sunday morning after Memorial Day.
Is that a new one, Dennis? I don't, I don't remember that one.
We did, last year was our first, we did the two-mile walk last year, and we started at Natural High where the Quanis has their craft fair, and we did just the downtown loop of two miles. So, this year, we're going to start at the park, and thanks to the Puget Ayers, we're going to be able to go through the back portion of the park, the undeveloped part, through the Puget property, come out on Martin Street, and come down to Main Street, and then finish at Natural High. So, people will get out at the park also. And we added a 5K run as well as the two-mile walk, so 20 bucks, we give you one of those great t-shirts that Carol is wearing right out here.
You want to walk up and down?
And then, just the last thing, is to let you, remind you about Grilling on the Green, first Saturday in August, which I think is August the 5th, and of course, we'd always like to encourage it, even to the city. It means a lot to the park committee and to the community to have the city represented at Grilling on the Green, so. And this is the eighth annual Grilling on the Green, I believe, so. That's it.
Thank you. Any other citizen input? Okay. Next, we have a presentation and acknowledgement of all the city staff who participated in the year-long Downtown Improvement Project Phase 2.
Madam Mayor, and members of the council, and anybody, any staff we have out there that can come up. Jim, are you the only one here?
Yeah, I'm the other guy.
All right.
Come on, Ashley.
Yeah. Well, Jim was a very major key player in this, in this whole project. I'd like to thank all the public work staff who went above and beyond during this project and during the construction, and also to the staff who had countless hours in the beginning of this project to bring it to fruition, such as community development department engineering, the public outreach that was done, the idea from our engineer to do something less intrusive to the businesses by doing a night, a night schedule, the community rep that they, that was proposed, and that there was 24/7, there was always a rep that either the city or the citizens or the businesses could call if there was any kind of issue. I got to admit, Granite was, within hours, they were out there and handling any issue that was, was brought to their attention. Keeping staff, making sure they were keeping everything on budget. It just was a great project that doesn't always go well in every community. I mean, the finished product may be just as beautiful, but during the process, sometimes things don't go just as well. There was a, a community in Texas that after their, their downtown project, it went so bad that all the council was recalled and the staff was fired. So, I'm so glad that we have a great project.
I didn't get to bring that up.
So, this is awesome project, and so, I, where are you? Doug will have more details about specific staff, but as, as I said before, Jim was one of the key people, and of course, Doug, and Kevin, and so, our other staff all also were very instrumental in getting this on. And so, since tonight, we had the exception, the acceptance of the, I wanted to bring this to your attention, and also, we're going to have a ribbon cutting at the beginning of the, of the Memorial Day Parade for the downtowns, the trees will be in then. So, anyway. So, Doug, do you want to add some information on that?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and cover Jim first so he can sit down, yeah, because I know how comfortable he is standing in front of a crowd, so. But Jim truly was instrumental in the completion of this project and having a successful project. He was out there long evenings with the rest of us, especially overseeing the utilities portion. Jim has a very large background in underground utilities, the most out of anybody in on our city staff. And it was really crucial having come in from the contractor's side. He understood production and how things had to happen, but he also understood what the city needed, and he was there to watch over the city's interests. And like any well, no matter how well the plan is, there's always issues, and there's always things that come up, there's always things that don't work, and particularly with utilities, because no one can see under the ground. And Jim was always right there, coming up with solutions, coming up with ideas, helping the contractor figure out how they could do things in an expedited manner so that we didn't delay our project. And, you know, when it came to all the tie-ins, we had all the businesses that still had to have water, still had to have sewer, and Jim was really instrumental in making sure that we had systems in place that would provide water for all the businesses and provide all the utilities that they needed so that they could continue their business while our project continued on. And, you know, Jim was our on-call person. If we had a problem, Jim's phone rang first. And so, I just wanted to extend a job well done to Jim. He definitely made a huge difference in this project. Thank you, Jim. I'll just give you, give you a real quick rundown on the rest of the players. For our engineering staff, our city engineer Paul and our city projects manager Olivia were involved in this project to a great extent. One huge benefit that we had with our city engineer Paul Curran is that he can design things on the fly. He can take a laser and a rod and go out there and figure out why it's not working and come up with a solution right there, instead of going back to the office and taking a week and then your whole project is delayed. Paul was very instrumental in that. Paul also had a lot of insight from having done a lot of these projects in other communities of disasters that they had. And he was instrumental in the walkways, making, the design of the walkways, and of all our businesses. That came after the plans were done. In reviewing it, it became obvious to us that there were not enough things being done for the businesses to keep them in business. So, Paul got right on it, came up with those ramps, and it, those kinds of things that, that our staff brought to the project really made a huge difference. And Olivia, of course, was doing all the paperwork and inspections. We had, Kevin was our, and Dan were our ambassadors. I think that the community outreach and the business outreach and the public outreach for this project was probably the most monumental effort ever done within the county of a lake in public outreach, because we understood how this project affected businesses, affected people, this community, and we wanted to keep them apprised of what was going on, because if most people know what's going on, then they have, they seem to be more understanding, and, and they, they get it. And so, Kevin was instrumental in going to every business on a very routine, almost daily basis, checking in. He would go with a representative from Granite, so that if the business had any concerns, not only could we address it from a city point, but we could also address it from the contractor's point. And that combination, I believe, made a huge difference in how smooth the project went with all our local businesses. And even when we had a problem or a hiccup, we were able to get it resolved within a day or two, and it, you know, and things got back to normal. And Kevin and his staff were very instrumental in that. Tom was overseeing all of our ADA compliance and issues. He was a huge help as well. He caught a few things that none of the rest of us had saw. We were able to make quick adjustments in the field, and so, our project is all ADA From public works, on the public work sector, we had, Donnie Mary was doing all of our concrete inspection. Donnie was a part-time employee with us, a temporary employee, and his experience in concrete was, was really invaluable. He was able to also help the contractor when they had some tough problems. He was able to help them resolve them and solve them right there in the field, so their work continued, and we stayed on schedule. Paul Harris, our utility superintendent, was out on a regular basis in the evenings. We'd all spend a lot of time in the evenings around downtown, but keeping an eye on things and helping address utility issues. Of course, I already talked about Jim, he was our main lead on, on the whole project, but particularly on the utilities. Manuel, with our utilities and construction crew, was doing a lot of utility inspection, was running our Aqua Tech when we had issues that we needed to assist the contractor with. We had Freddie, Tom, Matt, Steven, Gary, Forrest. We basically had the entire public work staff working on this project at one time or another. And I think that what made this project a little bit different than most projects was our interaction, not only with the business and the community, but also with the contractor. I had many, many years of experience being on the contractor's side, so when I came to the public side, I under, you know, I have an understanding of where the contractor is, and the things that they need as well. And so, when I was, first got into construction, even working, most of my work was with Caltrans, there was a team effort. And unfortunately, over the years, that has changed for some reason to where governmental agencies tend, tend to be adversarial. Lakeport, we don't believe in that. We believe we're a team. We're all here, we're all to get this project done to the absolute best possible, and I think that the outcome of your projects are much better when the governing body and the contractor are working as a team versus being adversarial. And I think that Lakeport really sets the standard as far as working with our contractors and going with a team approach versus going in as an adversarial approach. And I think that that's one reason that we've got a fantastic project. It came in on time, it came in under budget, and you know what? I couldn't ask for any more than that. And of course, I couldn't have done any of that without the fantastic staff that helped make all that happen. So, that's the end of my report.
Yeah, we're very fortunate, we have an awesome team of staff here. It's just, we're really proud of our staff here at City of Lakeport.
Thank you, Dennis.
You're welcome.
Do you guys have any comments?
Waiting to see the trees.
They started today.
All right. Next, we have a presentation of a proclamation designating May 14th through the 20th, 2017, as Police Week, and publicly saluting the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Chief, did you want to say anything before the proclamation?
I'll wait.
Okay. All right. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Lakeport to recognize National Police Week 2017 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the City of Lakeport. And whereas there have been 15,548 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2015, resulting in approximately 14,453 injuries. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, 394 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 143 officers killed in 2016 and 251 officers killed in previous years. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 29th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2017. And whereas, the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 14th through the 20th. And whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lakeport does hereby designate May 14th to the 20th, 2017 Police Week. In the City of Lakeport, the public, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council and the city for recognizing Police Week and Police Memorial Day, and also for the city's commitment and support to us, not only during this week, but throughout the year, for what we do. As everyone knows, our officers do a difficult job at times. And what I'd like to say, what I really appreciate about working here in Lakeport is that we have a high level of public support in our community, which some agencies don't get to enjoy as much as we do. That is, there's areas where, where the public working relationships and support aren't as high as we're lucky to have here, so I would thank the community for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We're so lucky to have you here, and I think we all feel it really important that we have a city police department and feel the benefits of that every day.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, on to council business. Next, we're going to consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to require the removal of the cargo container at 1015 South Main Street. Kevin, did you want to introduce us?
Sure, and then Kelly's going to pass out some judicial correspondence from the receipt later this afternoon, and you should have also got some information set on your tables there as well that was provided by the appellant as well, so. You should, two additional items outside of your packet, so.
And there's some on the back table.
And either are, yes, the public, or there is some additional copies available to the public on the back table as well. The item before you is an appeal of the Planning Commission's March 15th, 2017, decision directing community development staff to begin code enforcement-related action to remove the existing unpermitted cargo container located at 1015 South Main Street, associated with the Napa Auto Parts store at that location. A brief, not-so-brief background for you guys, just to kind of make sure that we're all on the same page as far as the facts of the case, and then I believe the representative of the appellant is here as well, and they're, they're able to ask, answer questions that you may have in regards to the timeline as well. In late 2015, early 2016, community development staff became aware of the construction of metal structural addition at this site without proper authorization. Following notification of that violation, the appellant filed an architectural and design review with staff. As part of the project review for this application, staff also discovered that the existing cargo container located along the north side of the main building was only permitted as a temporary structure associated with the building remodel done in 2004 by a previous operator at the site. The cargo container was never removed as was required per that temporary permit. As such, in preparing the architectural and design review for the legalization of an additional structure, a metal storage structure on the west side of the building, planning staff recommended the removal of the cargo container structure. The Planning Commission approved the architectural and design review for the metal storage structure on the west side of the building on August 10th, 2016, and as a part of this approval, the Planning Commission also included a condition requiring the removal of the cargo container on the north, on the north side of the building by February 10th, 2016. However, the applicant was encouraged to submit an architectural and design review application to potentially legalize the cargo container by incorporating some sort of fencing and/or additional screening to shield it from the view. The main concern was its, its visual impact upon Main Street. Following the Planning Commission's decision in August of 2016, the applicant obtained a building permit for the metal storage structure on the west side of the building and completed all required project conditions minus the condition to remove the cargo container on the north side of the building. The appellant informed community development staff that they received estimates for the construction of a fence to screen that cargo container, and the estimates they received were in excess of $5,000. And that they also, in addition to that, stated that they did not believe the city had the authority to require the removal of the structure. And on January 10, the appellant, Ms. Padell, submitted a formal letter outlining her intent to not remove or obtain an architectural and design review for the cargo container. That same letter was provided to the Planning Commission at their March 15 meeting and is also included in your packet as a supplement to their filed appeal. Staff scheduled a public hearing to review noncompliance with the required condition as outlined in the conditions to remove the cargo container. The appellant outlined two main arguments to staff and the Planning Commission. The first, that there are no city development standards for commercial accessory storage containers in the C2 zoning district. And second, made a recommendation that the cargo container be permitted with the provision to maintain a paint color consistent with the main building and the removal of some other equipment and other items that were around that structure. Staff contended that, yes, we agree that cargo containers are permitted in the C2 zoning district, but all structures, accessory structures, other commercial construction are required to obtain an architectural and design review permit consistent with the zoning ordinance. In order to become compliant with the zoning ordinance, design provisions must be consistent with the general plan design guidelines as well as the architectural and design review guidelines outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff felt that some element of screening could reduce that visual impact and therefore, it was staff's recommendation that something like that could be supported and brought back to the Planning Commission. Following a long public discussion before the Planning Commission, eventually by a vote of four to one, the Planning Commission made the determination that the applicant, by not removing the cargo container within the submitted timeline by February 10 and by not submitting an architectural and design review, that therefore directed planning staff to begin code enforcement efforts to move forward with removing the structure from the property. Following that decision, the appellant filed an appeal of that March 15 decision within the timeframe regulated in the ordinance. And that's why we're getting to the point where I'm here today. They submitted that January 10 letter again, as I stated, as a supplement. And then just to kind of summarize, also, the appellant has provided you with looks to be a potential alternative design element. I'm sure she'll speak to the specifics on that. And additionally, we received a letter from Commissioner Suzanne Russell also speaking to the issue as well.
Who is this one from?
That's from Ms. Padell, the appellant.
Oh, okay. David, do you want to talk to us about how this process works?
Sure. Excuse me, I do have a cold, so I apologize if I sound funny. So we're going to have a public hearing tonight on the applicant's appeal. And as you know, you're going to be sitting in your quasi-adjudicated role, hearing facts and making findings. So as a result, I request that you refrain from prejudging and making any statements that would prejudge the outcome until after you have heard presentations by the applicant and by any members of the public that wish to speak and submit evidence into the record. You are reviewing the Planning Commission's decision, and the record of that decision is what was provided in the agenda packet. That is all the information that you have from the Planning Commission as to what the Planning Commission was thinking, what its views were. Since the Planning Commission, like the council, has to act as a single body on the joint vote. At the conclusion of the presentations, it will be incumbent upon you to determine whether to grant the appeal, deny the appeal, or in your discretion, you have the ability to modify the conditions or direct staff of the applicant, for example, to submit a separate architectural and design review application for this or a particular structure. But we do need to make a decision on the appeal itself, so. Have any other questions? Or if you want to get started with the hearing, then you can deal with that then.
Yeah. Are there any quick questions? No? Okay. Then if our applicant wants to come up? Hi.
Deanne Padell.
Hi, Deanne.
Hi.
Go ahead and.
I just, I wasn't satisfied with the Planning Commission's decision. And it was suggested by one of the commissioners, maybe there was a less expensive way to screen the cargo container. And the main travelway is Main Street, and that's what they were worried about, was the exposure. That was the primary concern. And so I put together three different, less expensive ways to start at the building and go to the end of the container widthwise from the building to the side, and that would cover Main Street, the exposure to Main Street. So those were my three, something that would be less expensive and maybe under $1,000 versus $5,000.
Okay. We'll see if anyone else has some comments, and then we'll give you another chance to come back up. Is there anyone else here that wants to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Melissa Polton, CEO of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. Good evening, City Council and staff. I have to admit that when I was made aware of this situation, I'm a customer of Lakeport's. I'm in there quite often. And I have to admit that I had to drive over there to see what the complaint was about because I never noticed the storage container. And I drive down Main Street probably, well, with my job, maybe 10 times a week, and I've never noticed it. It is set back from the front of the building. I do not find it offensive. However, I do see where Ms. Padell has come up with a solution by blocking the view shed, if you will, to the front of the container that looks very attractive. But certainly, the requirement for this particular business, given how many storage containers there are in the city, and Kmart, by the way, moved in some more today, and they're there all year. And I don't know that the city has ever approached Kmart about their unsightly storage containers. I didn't know by their today account how many they have, but it's a continuing issue, and I find those offensive because they are open to the public due to the approach, the ingress and ingress to the parking lots. So hopefully, something can be done with that particular business. All of these businesses raise sales tax for the city. And I think there is a certain amount of discretion that could be shown to the businesses. And I wonder, and perhaps Kevin could answer this, how this particular issue came up for this particular business. I'm aware of one other business in the city that is just within the city limits that came under scrutiny for this same issue. I don't know the result of that particular business owner's complaint or situation. But it seems to me that, given the struggles that our businesses go through to exist, to continue to be profitable, that a certain amount of discretion could be taken by the city council, most particularly since I know for a fact, I've spoken to several people about this one issue with Lake Parts, and people look at me and say, "What storage container?" So I just beg your indulgence and your consideration as you move forward with your decision on this. I don't find it offensive. I find it almost nonexistent. But certainly, the fencing as proposed for the front of the container would make it, for those who happen to notice it, would make it more. Thank you.
Kevin, did you want to say anything to those points?
Well, just to clarify that our awareness of it was, whenever we get an application and we do, as part of that project review, we take a look at all of the permits issued for that site, just as a matter of the process. And it was discovered that it was only permitted as a temporary structure for a previous remodel project and was supposed to be removed with the conclusion of that project. Now, I freely admit that, I believe, Ms. Padell, that she was not aware of that when she took over it. That she did not know that that was part of the, that it was only temporary.
What about Kmart?
Kmart, we are taking action on it. We've been working with them because, as Melissa just noted, there's definitely been an increase in the number of them. And they've been expanding out into that area next to the Garden Center. So that is an active code enforcement violation right now.
Does anyone else want to speak for the applicant?
Can I just ask Kevin one question? On the conclusion of the previous period where they had the other event, how long since it was supposed to be removed has it been there?
You mean from when it was originally?
Allegedly supposed to be removed or technically supposed to be removed.
If that was 2004, 2005, depending on when that building permit was filed, I mean, it's been there for quite some time.
Before you discovered that it was?
Yes, correct.
Anyone else from the public for the applicant?
Do we have to go up front?
Yes, come on up. Don't be shy. No?
Melissa, go. Okay.
Okay, I'm going with Melissa. I go to.
Wait, wait, wait. Come closer. What's your name?
Debbie. Hello.
Hi, Debbie.
Hi. I'm speaking for all the ladies in those two rows right there that were laughing because not one of us has ever seen a storage unit next to Lake Parts. So they're all back there giggling because none of them have seen one either. So I feel like if it's an eyesore, somebody might have actually seen it.
I'm done.
Anyone else for the applicant? Anyone opposed to it? Want to come up and speak? Okay. We can bring you back to the council for some questions.
Kevin, in the county zoning ordinance, we have a step under the planning clearances for permits that say that you have to verify that there aren't any code violations on that parcel. Is there a similar clause in the municipal code for the city?
Not to the same extent as it's spelled out in the county ordinance. But I mean, it is, you know, it's implied, but not as directly. But as a means of doing that, that was part of the reason why staff recommended the inclusion of that condition to remove with also the caveat that we would certainly accept an architectural and design review permit to legalize the structure, the cargo container.
So Kevin, at any given moment in the city alone, there's probably hundreds, if not thousands, of various code violations. And they are usually dealt with on an informant or a notification of a neighbor or a complaint. They're complaint-driven. And I understand it's the same thing in the county as far as setbacks and things like that. When they become a danger, maybe somebody takes over. But these things are always out there. So rather than having somebody complain about it, this was discovered in the normal, methodical process of issuing an X permit?
That's correct.
Okay. So there was no complaints other than?
Well, no, I would take that back because, I mean, it did come up in discussions with the Planning Commission, not directly in itself, but under some general discussion in regards to building without permits, storage containers in general, and signage, just as a general discussion at the Planning Commission level in regards to some citywide issues, not necessarily directly to this site specifically.
But originally, they agreed to fence this in and/or make it inconspicuous?
Well, the condition reads that it be removed. That's the way the project condition language reads. However, during the Planning Commission discussion in August of 2016, there was discussion by the commission, as you're aware, as you were sitting on the commission at that time, that an option that is available would be to bring it into compliance through the submittal of an architectural and design review. And cities, the staff's position actually was just a blanket condition that it be removed. The commission was the one that actually recommended the inclusion of the timeframe, the six, I believe it was six months timeframe to either, to give the applicant time to decide whether they wanted it removed or to come in and apply for an architectural and design review.
So you can get a permanent permit for a cargo container, but it has to meet design review?
Correct.
And this one doesn't meet the design review? What would it need?
Well, it's, you know, our design review requirements are, they're not direct. They're kind of recommendations or requirements. So my interpretation of those is really, you'd have a really difficult time in making a cargo container completely consistent with their design review elements, you know, having consistent roof lines between buildings and other design elements like that. So my approach is, because these are affordable products, they're secure, they're very much used, we're seeing more and more of them show up, is to try and disguise their appearance either through, you know, building faux facades or screening them sort of completely from the public view.
So you're saying it would be an exception, but you just, we can't see it?
I wouldn't call it an exception. I mean, just by screening it and not making it visible, I think it would be consistent with both the architectural and design guidelines and our community design element within the general plan.
Okay. And so then the applicant suggested screening the front of it. Does that cover it? Or who's to the side of it? Would they?
Given its size, on a normal occasion, it would fall within my administrative authority to approve that because it is 400 square feet or less. But given also the fact that the Planning Commission directly crafted these conditions and stuff, I would probably bump that up to the Planning Commission level to take a look at that architectural and design review. But there was some discussion. I mean, there's no vote taken on, you know, on what would be. But we would encourage some element of screening it, not completely, but mostly from the view shed there along Main Street.
Okay, so if the Planning Commission was okay with one of these options that they're giving to us today, would that also have to be painted the same color as the building so it kind of blends in?
Not necessarily. I mean, we'd have to take a look at it and run it through, you know, all of our different design guidelines and stuff. But I would look at this more as like a fence, screen, a couple of these show plants and things like that. The main item wouldn't be necessarily the color as much as just visually screening it. So I probably would not be picky necessarily on the color.
Why did this expire? Why wasn't this handled before the deadline? And why did it end up here?
You mean in particular to the six-month period?
Well, the option to fence it before a certain date and nothing happened?
Well, as outlined in that letter provided by the appellant, the main thing was the cost, the cost of the fence.
Okay. So this is just the process then, when they decide that doesn't work?
Well, they took it back to be reviewed by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission recommended that they didn't find that acceptable and directed staff to move forward with code enforcement, sort of abatement action on it. And that's where the applicant decided to appeal. And that's where the applicant decided to appeal that decision.
So then for clarification, the planning commission didn't decide that screening wasn't acceptable, they decided that the applicant's appeal saying that the city had no authority in the first place, and second, it was too expensive, and so essentially refused, saying that that option was not an option. That's what the planning commission turned down then, correct?
Correct, yes. If you, if you look at those, the minute order for it, the, you can see the motion that was made, you know, prior to that motion, the specific discussion at that time was that there was no option being presented to them to take a look at the screening at this time. There was no application filed, and it simply came down to, they were provided a timeline to either remove the structure or to, to get an application together, and that just wasn't done. And so that was the, the main impeditus behind their motion directing staff to, to move forward with having it removed.
Another question, the $5,000 fee that would take the fences things, did you receive any documents on that and when were they done? You know?
Just, just from the, the appellant and their, and their estimates that they stated in, in the letter that's, that's provided in the package. But no, we did it, go out and, and conduct our own estimates.
No, I was just kind of wondering when they gave you the estimate or-
It would be prior to that, this submittal, the January letter, because our, Dan Chance, our associate planner, went out and, or went out and spoke with the applicant at that time, and she said that the estimates she had received were very expensive and, and she wasn't looking at main, moving forward with the fence idea. We also stated we'd be open to some other alternatives, but that's when we received that January 10th letter where she, that said that she did not believe that the city had the authority to require it to be removed.
So along those lines, it occurs to me that, I mean, we, the appellant just did a construction project, added so many square feet on there, which by the way, it doesn't look like the roof line is exactly the same as the other one. But nevertheless, it was approved by the planning commission, and it occurs to me much the same as any business decision, they say, well, I'm just not going to do it, they can't make me, and then suddenly, they can make me. So I have another option now, this 20% of what the original is, I'd like to come in and, and say, yes, okay, I will do this, and I do think this is a, you know, you really believe this is necessary, many, many people never even seen it, but this is what I need to do, I'd like to be compliant, I'd like to take care of this, let's get it done. So here's my option. I know that the time has expired, after all, it was there for 11 years before anybody even noticed that it was illegal. So it seems to me that if the appellant is willing to do some type of diminished fencing that is amenable to the planning commission, and you just said that you don't have the administrative authority, then I think that maybe we might be able to send it back to them to see the new plans and to see whether or not they can come to an agreement. Because quite frankly, I've driven in and out of there through the back way, through the side way, and, you know, I know I'm not the most perceptive guy in the world, but I didn't really notice it until I looked at the photographs, and I wasn't even sure what side it was on. So I think that, that in light of the feeling that I have and some of the other people have, it's not the eyesore that everybody thinks it might have been, and that if she's willing to make this kind of concession and actually do some fencing that might fit in within the planning commission's guidelines, that I think that maybe that might be a good way to go. Because I, I think that, I mean, after all, she got in there, way after this thing was in there, and surprise, surprise, even surprised to the, to the staff, I'm sure. So I think that that would be a really good solution to, to send it back with modifications that maybe they have approval at the higher level since Kevin can't make that decision. So I would think that we could modify the condition, would be the most appropriate under the conditions. That's my personal opinion.
Mr. Mayor, by me, just before the council moves forward with, with consideration of the site, we should give the applicant a more opportunity, and you're obviously welcome to, to ask questions.
Please, for sure.
So one thing I was, I was noticing when I was reading this, that was just handed out to us, the letter from the planning commissioner and also Ms. Padell, was, and I just kind of more wanted to be clear for the public, is the planning commission didn't go look for unseen cargo containers. This was found when they were out there looking at a 400-foot addition that took them a year and a half to sort out, even getting talked to about, the owners of the property, because it was trying, it was being shown as a carport, but it was actually being used as a storage facility. So I mean, it, it's not just a case of, of city government having nothing to do and going out and finding a storage container, we were out there for another reason and went, hey, that's not supposed to be there. Am I right in understanding that? That's how this all came about?
That's correct.
So there was, there was another violation that led to uncovering this violation?
Yes.
But I, I, I went and drove by there today, I'm with, I'm with Kenny on this one, I went and drove by and structurally, it looks exactly the same, it's painted the same color. I was more concerned with the empty 55-gallon barrels that are along the back wall than I was about the storage container. I mean, that, that was more of a, an issue for me. Yeah. If she's willing to put up a fence.
Okay. Anything else? Yeah? Nothing for her? Dan, you want to come back up?
Did you guys ask me questions or?
Do you have something to add?
Well, I purchased the, the metal building, you are correct, I did not get a permit. I honestly did not believe I needed a permit. It is not permanent, it's not on a foundation, it has stakes that go in the ground, and I attached it with some, something John Hagan came and put, so it didn't leak in between the two buildings. But that is why I did not get a permit, because I did not believe I needed one, not because I was just shunning the city and saying, eh, I don't need one. So that's the honest truth. I put it up in 2000, I purchased it in 2014. The first letter I got from the city was December 2015. And I called on, let's see, I responded, no, 2015 December was the first letter I got from the city, and I responded on 215. Dan told me he was really busy at that time and that he would have to get back with me, and he did call me back at a later date, but it didn't go for like three years, like was stated.
Okay, thank you.
And I would be willing to put up, like I, you know, any of those, something that is reasonably priced, put it up from the building to the edge of the container to block it from Main Street, we'll paint it the same color as the building to make, you know, to make it look better. I don't think it looks bad anyway, but that's besides the point.
And do you, would you have like a timeframe that you would do the putting up of the-
It probably would take very long, some of that stuff that I put in there, my husband can make some of it, depending on what we side on. If not, we can buy it, I mean, some of that stuff was on Amazon or Home Depot.
Yeah, I see, things like that.
So now that you have options then that aren't fiscally prohibitive, would you have any problem taking that back through the design review with the planning commission with these options that are, are more palatable?
No. As long as it's a nice, easy meeting like this one is. The last one wasn't very easy.
We're not finished yet.
Sorry to hear that.
You did bring cookies, right?
Any other questions for her? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have an idea what direction we want to go?
Well, according to the city attorney, we either grant, deny, or we modify the conditions. And under the conditions that we have, we're, we're basically sending this back to the planning commission. So I think that we're just asking for another architectural and design review. Is that what we're saying, just sending it back so they can-
It's a permit type. Wouldn't it be a, would it be this, a different permit, architectural design review permit for specific to the cargo container, or would it just be sort of an expansion or a continuation of the ongoing permit?
Or do we need to say that, David? How?
I mean, my, my first take would be that it would be a separate architectural design review permit.
Correct.
With that for me.
I mean, you could modify the, the condition language, the, the subject condition language to state that, but that seems like it would muddy it up even more.
You'd have to reopen that application. So I think the question then, because really what the planning commission did was they said, you failed to fulfill the project conditions, therefore, city staff is authorized to initiate abatement of the illegal structure. So that gave Kevin, the development director, authority to move forward with that. So if you, you could deny, you could sustain the appeal to the extent of the requirement of abatement with direction that a new architectural design review application for the storage structure be submitted in a timely fashion. But you could-
Set it as the timeline, timeframe or something like that too?
Could we make a sustaining the appeal contingency on, could make it contingent on submission of design review or architectural review? Or do we need to, like, sustain the appeal?
Well, you, you can sustain the appeal with respect to the, the failure to meet the project conditions, but overturn, overrule the appeals to the extent that it required immediate abatement and then direct the applicant to submit a new architectural design review application. Therefore, Kevin wouldn't necessarily, he wouldn't necessarily have the authority to go out tomorrow and start abatement proceedings. And you could certainly put a timeline on that.
Kelly, did you get that, all of that? Can you read that back? No.
I'm just saying, you have options, right? So do you want to sustain? Do you want to say, yes, this, this, this applicant is in violation of the conditions and therefore Kevin can go out and abate, but then let her know that once there's a new application in, and then that's not going to happen, right? I mean, once-
Right.
Or do you want to say, we'll sus, you know, the, the, we, we affirm the appeal or, you know, we, and everything essentially that the planning commission did is overruled in that, in that sense, tell them to come back with a new application? I don't know. Do, does staff have a preference for how it would prefer to have that?
I, I think that's pretty good if, if we included a, a reasonable timeframe in there as well so that, that wasn't complied with. I mean, would, would, would another option be to, to continue this item to a certain date with the idea that they, no, because you still have to, you still have to take an action on the appeal.
I, I guess my recommendation, if what, if what the, if what you guys want to do is have a new architectural design review, then I would be inclined to recommend that you actually overturn the planning commission's decision.
Grant the appeal.
So grant the appeal, then-
Because that way-
Contingent upon submission and timely completion of a architecturally designed, approved by the planning commission project.
Yes.
So then if we make that motion and it's not done within, you know, call it 60 days, just, just for numbers, it's not, if, if the design plan isn't put back in within 60 days, it goes back to the planning commission's ruling and abatement will begin on day 61.
We might want to check with Kevin about a reasonable timeframe for the application to be processed.
I don't know, I think submittal of the application is within 60 days is fine, and then, and we'll, we'll process it.
And so the contingency would be lifted if there were the denial of that application?
Right.
Yeah.
Or if they, or if the application was not filed, obviously, within that timeframe.
Correct.
Though if the application is denied by the planning commission, the appellant still has the right to then appeal that decision as well?
We'll meet back right here.
And, okay, good.
Don't thank him.
Confused.
Do you have a question, George?
No, I'm just trying to, you know, sustain.
Well, granting and denying, but sustaining was not one of the three options.
The sample of, the first one was sustained, and that's why it was-
So then-
We're going to grant it.
Yeah, so, Madam Mayor, I would move to grant the appeal contingent upon a timely submission of an architectural review.
Put a time on it.
On the, the storage container, not to exceed 60 days with that.
Second one.
Sure. Yep.
Did that cover everything?
Because that's all we need to do for now, right?
Well, actually, you also need to say that the design review is approved. Well, because if, if the design review isn't approved, now she's put in the design review, it's not approved, you've already said that the planning commission is-
Then they can abate.
Contingent, so it's contingent upon the application within 60 days-
And the approval by the planning commission.
Planning commission, right, because if the planning commission doesn't approve the new design review, you've already told, she put in the review, but-
Correct.
She's now not, not going to be remade, abated, so.
So did you get that amendment?
Yes, do you still want to keep the 60 days?
Yes, 65 days for the filing of the-
The filing of the application and the subsequent approval by the planning commission.
Kelly, would you mind reading it back for us?
Yep. Motion to grant the appeal contingent upon timely submission of an architectural review within 60 days and subsequent approval of the planning commission by the planning commission.
Still second, second amendment. All right, you have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, we have Geiselman Street water line replacement.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You guys are going to stay for the rest of the meeting? Doug, you're up.
Madam Mayor, counsel, before you is a request to award construction contract to the low bidder on the Geiselman water line replacement project. The low bidder is Green Rideaway Construction Incorporated for the amount of $393,688. The project is to replace approximately 1,356 feet of water main, increasing it to an eight-inch water main and providing new services to all the homes within the project limits, which is, is Geiselman Street. Staff is asking you to grant permission to award and to begin the process of getting all the documents signed and the project going. Any questions? I'd be more than glad to answer.
Thanks, Nick. Questions?
I have a question for the two new council members have, I remember when I came on board, Mark Brannigan gave me a tour of the city in various places and different difficulties, and one of the most ridiculous problem areas we ever had was Geiselman with the continuous water line breakage and so forth, and then we wanted to get some paving up there and all this different stuff, and this has been a project, it's been a real thorn in your side, and I know it's very expensive, but I'm glad to hear that the engineer actually was going to charge more than, than the low bidder, so that's a, that's a good thing.
That's a first, mark it on your calendar, please.
Also, there was some talk of the city coming up with funds to pave the whole street, is that going to still happen?
That is our intent. The reason, it originally started out as a paving project, of course, good sense says we, with, going back to what Councilman Barlett was speaking about, the water line isn't such bad repair, would be taking up brand-new asphalt, and I don't want that on my watch, thank you very much. So it was determined that it was, in order to repave Geiselman, we had to get that water line replaced, and so our hope and intent is to do that during the summer months when there is no school in, to, because that's going to be the least amount of traffic. And then as soon as we have funding available, then we will be repaving that as well.
And that was taken, the funding was taken off the table for road improvements last year because of the budget, and due to Measure C, we will be asking for that to be put back on the budget this year to get that road done, so otherwise, we would not be able to have done that this year, so. Thank you, just a second, thank you, Court. Thank you, just a second, thank you, Court.
So the Measure Z money is above and beyond what you have here then, right? That you're going to use...
That's just for the water line that you're talking about, yeah.
Right, this is just the water line.
And then we'll be doing the street in the next budget year, and so we will be counting on some Measure C funds in order to do that, be able to do that paving on that street.
So am I, am I correct in understanding that we're going to tear up the street to do the water line and then basically patch it and then do the street again?
Well, there will, yes. That, that's, you hit the nail right on the head. We're talking about a three to four foot width of the trench to put the new water line in, which that will have an asphalt patch put back on it, and then when we have the funding and we can get it all put together, then we'll be coming back in and overlaying the entire roadway. So, we're not necessarily going to dig up everything that we're doing there with the water line, but we will be overlaying it. Does that make, do you understand the process?
I do believe so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public? Okay. If there's no other questions, we'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, move to award a construction contract to Green Right-Away Construction Incorporated for the Geiselman Street water line replacement project. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a request for a nonprofit vending and concessions at Westside Community Park Phase Two. Doug?
It's the night of Doug, isn't it?
Yeah.
Mark that on your calendar, too, please. Before you, Madam Mayor and counsel, is a request from the Westside Park Committee to allow for nonprofit vending and concessions at the Westside Park Phase Two, which is the baseball section, and it's a section that is under lease to the Westside Park Committee. The reason this is being brought to council is that our ordinance does not specifically, it does not address nonprofits. It addresses for-profit activities as being not permitted in city parks, but it does not address nonprofits. And historically, in the past, anytime we've had a nonprofit organization wishing to do fundraising or those kinds of things, that comes to council, and then council grants them the right, typically it's in Library Park or on Park Street or something along those lines. This is a little bit different, so we definitely want to counsel the way in. When Dennis came and approached me about this, I requested that he take it to the Park and Recreation Commission, which I felt was the, the right step in the chain. He came and gave a presentation to the Park and Rec, Commission. They approved unanimously with his request to allow nonprofit concessions. In particular, what they want to do is build a concession stand on the Phase Two property there with the baseball fields. And that would be used with the Little League and also with the Soccer League, would both use that concession stand facility. It would be built the city code, you know, we would give them a waiver on building permit to come in and get a building permit, and so we would follow the proper channels with that, and it would be inspected by our building inspector to make sure that it was safe and met all of the building requirements for that type of a structure. And it has staff's support. I support that. I know that when I was, believe it or not, young once upon a time, you know, all of our baseball fields had concession stands at, and that was, mom got to go work in the concession stand, did your fundraising while you got to go play baseball. And so I think this is something that's very common in many communities, but being that it was not specifically addressed in our ordinance, we felt that it was important to bring it to council and to get council's approval on going ahead and doing that. What I would also recommend is at a later date, you know, staff can look at amending that ordinance, if it's council's direction to allow for nonprofit, have it actually put in our ordinance, that nonprofit fundraisings in our park system is okay, if that's council's wish.
Actually, I think we wanted to separate Westside Park from the Library Park ordinance, so, because it's, it's the playing fields and everything, and create an opportunity to have an ongoing concession for nonprofit there and probably separate that from Library Park, and Library Park could stand as is, that if you do want to do any type of concessions, you have to come back to the council for, unless council wants to change that. But our recommendation would be to do a resolution to allow Westside Park to have its non, a concession stand for the nonprofit, for the kids and whatever else needs to be nonprofit there. So we would bring back a resolution, if not the next meeting, the one after that, but we're hopefully by the next meeting might be able to have the resolution ready to, for approval. So we just want a direction from council at this point, if that's the direction you wanted us to go in, we will bring the resolution back to you.
Was there any talk about enforcement of the concessions for profit?
Nobody discussed that.
Well, it's just going to come up because, you know, every year they've been selling the...
Snow cone.
Snow cones to churros, and, I mean, I think people look forward to that and...
That, that...
We haven't done anything about it.
No, that did come to council, and council did approve the snow cone, the sales of snow cones at Westside.
We did allow it?
For the one, one season.
One season, right?
Just the one season.
Oh, was it just the one season? I, I know that that had came, there was a request that came to council for that. But if you would like just to take a look at that and bring something back to council as well, we just need some council direction on where council would like to go with, with the vending issue.
Okay. Any questions?
One question. So this is just basically for the soccer and the baseball, but what if somebody has another event which is a nonprofit? Can they use that building also, or can they build their own building? I mean, how far can this go?
Well, the Westside Park's going to be the one that's going to be overseeing the activities for the parks and for the concession stand. If council wants to put a limit on that, that, you know, we'll definitely do that, but we, at this point, we haven't talked about limiting it. We would leave, we had thought of leaving it to the Westside Park Committee to the discretion on, on the use of it, but as long as it was a nonprofit agency.
Dennis, do you want to come up? I would assume you'd have to reserve it and that it's a snack shack, basically. So if you have an event out there and you've reserved a space and you want to sell stuff, you can use the snack shack to do that.
Thank you. Yeah, if, our, our recommendation was that you need to be leasing, you need to be, have an agreement with us to use the facility. If you have an agreement with us to use the facility, then you could use the concession stand. So, versus somebody else just rolling up in their car and saying, oh, nonprofit, I'll sell these things in the parking lot, but you have to have an agreement with us in advance to use the facility.
Okay, so like, this is hypothetical naturally, but let's say a golf club comes out here and they're going to have a driving range thing to benefit cancer, and so at that point, if he says, yeah, go ahead and hit golf balls, but then if you need to use the concession stand, you can.
Correct.
That's all hypothetical.
Right, if they were to put in an application with the Westside Park Committee to use the facility for what you're suggesting, then yes, they would be leasing the facility from us, therefore they could use a concession stand.
If they were nonprofit.
If they were nonprofit, correct. So we were suggesting, actually, when I talked maybe with Margaret or Doug, when I forget, that you kind of worked that into the ordinance, that it would be, you have to be leasing the facility, and that might be in the letter that I, I sent it to you. I can't remember for sure right now.
I'm just wondering on concessions, we're, we're talking hamburgers, hot dogs, soap pop, water.
Correct.
Are you looking at beer sales?
No.
Okay.
And, you know, the, the president of the, no, the, the president of the Conacta U Soccer League is here, and he's actually the one that came up and, you know, originally said, hey, we'd like to get it together and build a concession stand, so he might be able to answer some other questions that you have. Wayne Yankee is the new president of the Conacta U Soccer League.
Okay.
On his maiden voyage.
You can always make it that if there was an event that you wanted to have alcohol, that they'd have to come back to the council to get an approval or something like that.
As the president of Conacta U Soccer, I don't think that that's anything that we've even talked about or even thought about, so that's definitely not our drive. Our drive is to fundraise for our kids, to keep registration fees low for our community. So that's exactly why we came to the Westside Park about this, for, for seasons on, and on as I can remember the last eight years, they're setting up tables and selling built odds and ends of water bottles and Gatorade and whatnot, and we just wanted to have a more formal kind of concession, and so that's how this process started. I rest assured that, you know, from my standpoint, Conacta U Soccer League is incoming president, that we're trying to raise money for the kids so that we can keep costs low. So, and as far as working with public health to make sure that we're following whatever guidelines are required for, for vending of food in the, in the parks, that's what we're, we're working on. You know, hot dogs and hamburgers are even a stretch. It's bottled water, easy stuff. We can make a couple hundred bucks maybe on a Saturday, and like I said again, to put that money back towards the kids throughout the season. Do you guys have any questions for me while I'm up here?
So the structure itself is going to be built by the Westside Park's funds, right?
So actually, we, it's a community involvement effort right now. We've got multiple community vendors, different hardware stores that are willing to help support this operation. So the funds themselves, we're trying to keep those very minimal from, from both Conacta U Soccer and the Westside Park Association, because neither one of us have a whole lot of money just sitting around and build a nice little concession stand. So it's kind of a group effort at this time. Don't have a finalized plan to the city, but we want to make sure that we can check this off the block on our way, so that wasn't a hiccup after we'd already built this nice little concession stand. Good question.
No, thank you for doing that. That would be a great addition. Oh, can you state your name again?
Wayne Yankee. Y-H-K-E-Y.
I think Wayne's probably accurate saying that, you know, to keep it simple for a while, because anybody who's tried to open up a restaurant and trying to pass public health, I mean, you're already broke before you start. You ran out of all your working capital for the next five years trying to be compliant, you know, doing some kind of a hot dog roll or something like that. But if, the one thing that I would, I would try and get you to do is, is think of all the things you might be able to do and get those in there early rather than after you do it, and then say, oh my God, I wish we had a three compartment sink, or I wish we had this, or something like that. But the whole idea of having the nonprofits, I know as a grandparent and a surrogate grandparent, you know, funding all of the kids through soccer when their parents are already strapped and having a tough time, that something like this is really welcomed and needed to help supplement and, and to sponsor some of the kids that wouldn't otherwise be able to do it just because of, you know, the financial needs, and then getting back and forth from wherever they happen to be, so I think it's a great thing. And I look forward to you guys making lots and lots of money for the park and for your organization, but try and build it with, you know, the breakers that are big enough and all that city code stuff would be great, and with an eye to the future, because, you know, who knows what might go in on there, and with the help from other organizations like the Road and the Lions and all the others. So, good luck.
Those are all discussions we've already been having about plumbing and electric and the health department and what we would be allowed to utilize it for in the future, so those are all part of the considerations for the, the building of the structure itself.
Already.
Well, there's always a lot of thirsty teens out there, so they'll be happy there's some water. They forget their water bottles, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Any other comments or questions?
Before we leave this, I think it should be abundantly clear that whether somebody is putting on a concert in the park, or there, you know, there's the West Shore Little League or the Soccer League, that people that are coming in there and opportunistically cherry-picking the crowd for their own personal gains is something that I am absolutely opposed to, and they have no right to come in with NCC Radio and the sponsors and they want to try and make a buck down there for their own personal gains, or to show up with a carload of trinkets or burgers that they bought and they want to, you know, sublet them out for half, you know, double the price or whatever. I, I, I just think that that needs to be dealt with, and I'm glad you brought it up.
We're going to need to deal with that, Nick.
That's something that, when an opportunity comes for people to make money at someone else's expense for putting on the event, it just isn't fair. It just isn't right. And I know that Alan Matthews and, and the people over at NCC Radio have been battling with people trying to say, no, you can't come down here, we're doing this, you know, this is our thing, we're bringing the people here, you cannot sell stuff down here, and they shouldn't even have to have that conversation, it should be already cut and dried, so. My personal humble opinion.
Any other questions? Not, we'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to authorize nonprofit vending and concessions, including a concession stand on Phase Two of Westside Park.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, request to move the Equestrian Park from Westside Park to CLMSD property off of Highway 175. Oh my God, Doug?
It's me again. Madam Mayor and counsel, you have before you a staff report put together by staff requesting the relocation of the Equestrian, I'm calling it the Equestrian Park, from Westside Park Phase Three to the CLMSD property on, and particularly on the south end of the CLMSD property where it borders Highway 175. To give you some background, the Westside Park and a group of the local, well, there's several local horse groups that came in with Dennis, and it asked to, they wanted to start preparing plans for the Equestrian Park at Westside Park, and so staff said, sure, bring us some, yeah, go ahead and, and get some plans and bring them to us, and so we can take a look at them and we can see what we, what we can do to make this all work. So they had enlisted Rezika to help them with their design. They brought us some preliminary designs. It became apparent very quickly in the process that the area that was set aside for the Equestrian Park was not going to be adequate for the facility that they wished to, to put there. There, it became obvious that there were going to be complications with ingress and egress, particularly if there were other, at full build-out, if there were other events going on, soccer, baseball, with horse trailers and pedestrians, and the feasibility of installing the road on the south side of Phase Three, which would be the back of the, over the back of the whip place, was very problematic and was, was not really feasible, between the cost of moving all over the earth and then the problems that would create with cut banks and drainage issues, and the list went on and on. And so in sitting down with them and trying to come up with, with some way that we could accommodate in Equestrian Park, staff kind of put our heads together, and we felt that the CLMSD property offered all of the things that Westside Park did not offer. We have the room, we, you know, we have easy ingress and egress off of a, you know, a state highway right into a parking facility that would be large enough to allow for pull-throughs, which is very important to horse people. That means you don't have to be trying to back that horse trailer up without running into somebody else. You know, you pull in, when you get done, you load your horse up and you pull straight ahead, and then you can make your loop and, and exit out of the parking lot. You know, the CLMSD site offers that kind of room to allow for that, that type of a parking situation. It also has the room to let them, to accommodate the size of arena that they wanted. The, the size that they originally approached us with was, I believe it was between four and six hundred feet, which could not really be accommodated at Westside Park, but yet at the CLMSD property, we feel that we will be able to accommodate that size of an arena without any problem. And so, as we came up with, with this thought and moved it forward, we talked with Dennis and we talked with, with the different horse groups, and, and took them out and showed them the site that we were talking about, the area that we're proposing to be used for that. They were ecstatic, felt that that would be a much better fit for them, and so at that point in time, staff recommended that they take it to the Park and Recreation Commission, being that it involved Westside Park, and we felt that that would be the proper... proper chain to go through. Dennis and the horse groups came and made a presentation to the Westside, or to the Park and Recreation Commission. At that point in time, the Park and Rec Commission voted unanimously in favor of this. So at that time, a staff report was prepared and presented to council. There, just to give a couple more really quick details, it's going to take a little bit of work to make this all happen because at this point in time, that particular part of the CLMSD is not annexed into the city. So we will have to go to the county for a...
General Plan Conformity Report and then appropriate SEQA.
Right. I can never remember that. Kevin's told me that 42 times. You know, there is a possible fee with that. We're going to request that the county waive that fee, being that this facility is also going to serve all the county, which actually most of the horse groups are in the county. But, so it's not like it's reserved or for just city residents or anything like that. This is really going to be a, you know, a regional horse park, what I'm calling Equestrian Park, that everybody can use. So we're really hoping that county's going to jump on that and say, "Yes, this is for, you know, our constituents as well," and waive that fee. Any questions?
A little confused about the property itself. So we own the property, but it's not in the city, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Correct.
It's more confusing than that, though, because part of it is in the city and part of it is not.
Well, I drove by there, I think, today, and it's like past the stoplight, so it's not really in the city.
I think ultimately the goal is, is as time allows, is to annex that, you know, on into the city. It really should be. But in order to expedite this, we thought it would be much quicker to approach this as, given the thing that Kevin said, versus trying to do, you know, do a whole annexation. So that's why we chose to go that way.
And then the other question I would have is, let's say that piece rolls fine, how is this all going to be funded for making this an Equestrian Center?
Westside Park is also, I guess I should throw that in there. The Westside Park Committee is going to be overseeing this facility as well. And so they will be helping with the Equestrian groups that are going to be using that facility. They're going to be coming up with the funds to build the facility. City staff can, will be doing some assistance with some original, as in the staff reports, some original topo-ing. We will work with Caltrans on the encroachment permit and the encroachment coming off of Highway 175. But other than that, all the cost has been discussed, is going to be bore by the Westside Park Committee and the Equestrian groups.
Is this Phase Four of Westside Park?
Five, I think.
Five?
Phase Five.
It's still on the west side.
Oh, what's the proximity of this area to the possible mountain bike region?
The mountain bike people, when they came and spoke to us, would be to the west of this facility.
Okay, is there enough buffer that it won't be a complete use?
That is our hope.
It's going to work real well.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we have not been, the bike people have not come back and talked to us. We had met with them twice, and they were going to be coming back with some plans and, you know, some more information. And unfortunately, we have heard nothing from them recently. So I'm not sure if that's something that's still ongoing or not, that they haven't said.
Anyone from the public? Come on up.
My name is Carol Thorne, and I'm associated with Hoes and Wheels Driving Club, Lake County Horse Council, and Clearlake Junior Horsemen. Try to make this breathe. When I grew up here, which was in the 70s, the kids had a local arena that was at the fairgrounds. It was their arena. It was called the Clearlake Junior Horsemen. And they have a building there which still exists. The arena was there for the kids to use whenever they wanted. We spent half our lives there as kids growing up in the summertime. So we were asked by the fairgrounds if we wanted to cover the arena. So we said, "Sure, that sounds great." Well, and as it turned out through trickle-down effect in years, it has been reduced to time use for the kids to use as they want, from the end of the October Classic, which is about mid-October, to the end of November, period. So this youth of the community, except for the generosity of local property owners that have arenas, have no place to go except Middletown. So that's why I'm here. Our kids have no place to go. And we need a local arena that can't be taken away, that our kids can use for the Junior Horsemen Drill Team, that the drill team can practice on, the kids can have horse shows, hopefully, you know, little horse shows, little local stuff, and maybe even a Jim Canner too. But that's why I'm here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She has a fan club.
I'm back again. Good meeting with Doug. Dennis and Doug. Just a couple things, though. There are quite a few people from the horse community here, and I'm sure they'd all be happy to tell you some good reason why they think this is a better location than the site at the Westside Park. But, you know, Doug pretty well highlighted it. You know, when Cliff was nice enough to have a little, you know, site plan drawn up for us, and there was just no way that was really going to work and accommodate the needs of these people who belong to many different horse organizations. As Carol mentioned, she belongs to three, but I'm learning a lot about horses that I knew nothing about before. So this will, this is a much better site, and if we can make it work, it would work better for the community, it would work better for the kids, and it would work better for the park in the long run, too, so.
Would it be big enough that it would accommodate that people from other areas would come to, and I don't know if they could eat, or, you know?
Doug, when we were out there looking at it, he says, we haven't done like a real survey, but it was like 10 acres. It's big enough that you could have a larger arena, you could have a round pin, get some of those other things that they need when they have events, you know?
Yeah.
We were looking at the park as having a smaller arena and then, you know, maybe cutting a chunk out of a hillside to get a round pin, or you can...
Yeah, I wondered how it was all going to fit over there.
So I think this would be big enough that we could have events from out of the area. Carol may know that better, or Jackson or one of those.
Yeah, we're going to steal the rodeo. As soon as you build this thing, we're going to steal the rodeo.
I listen, when Carol and I went to the Rodeo Association, when we first came to you to talk about, gee, can we start making plans for a horse event? The rodeo people wanted to, "Was it going to be big enough to put the rodeo on there?" We will know. It's not, but maybe that would be, you know, in the new location, so.
So Dennis, you think you will be able to fill the space that was formerly going to be the Equestrian Center with some other exciting activity in West Shore Park?
Bike. West Side. Come to the bike.
My successor can do it.
Anyone else from the public?
It's a race.
Just technical stuff. My entry into public service was on a park board in Nevada County, so we had horses and dogs and disc golfers all kind of fighting. So my question is basically for staff. There's probably some master plan of sorts out for the park that probably designated some Equestrian stuff. Obviously, I'm very supportive if the horse people found a home, that's really good, based on my past experience, even if you have multiple use on a plan in real life. Horses in a mixed-use park can be kind of problematic, both for the horse people and the other people there. But what's going to go on there, I know we had previously talked about disc golfing. I know the disc golfers that have brought that for are actually meeting tonight for their club meetings, so they can't really respond to that. And I'm sure there are other interest groups that may have some interesting ideas for that particular portion of the property. So I just want to be supportive of the horses, but also want to say if there's a master plan process or if the park committee can kind of reboot the planning process for that portion, this is a really opportune time to do that, so, thank you.
I just wanted to add that while the horse organizations, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Carol Maxwell and affiliated with the Lake County Horse Council, Hoes and Wheels, and the Lake County chapter of the California Dress Dance Society. And even though we're all here affiliated with groups, this facility would be limited to organizations, individuals in the county who have horses and would like to train them or exercise them, or just enjoy them in inclement weather or any other time, could use it too. While organizations might book an event, it wouldn't be the toy of the organizations. It would be a facility that all citizens of the county and their friends and relatives could enjoy. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
We should have horse stuff on the agenda more often.
My name is Richard Yales. I'm a fairly new resident to Lake County, formerly from Sonoma County. I'm a member of the Lakeport Rotary, Westside Park Committee. I'm the caretaker. My partner, Mary, and I are the caretakers for Westside Park. And the reason I got involved with the Westside Park was a request, if I had any knowledge of how to put together a bicycle pump track. I'm not trying to talk about that subject, but specifically I got involved to benefit the community, and what I learned was this Equestrian area and the idea of being a Phase Three project to the Westside Park, and we're currently at Phase Two, not yet completed, and the idea that this land opened up for the opportunity of an Equestrian arena, I thought was a fantastic idea, and I fully support the horse group here. I think it's heritage for this county and other neighboring counties as well. And I think that the question was raised in regard to the mountain bike activity and what I understand has happened, since I'm also part of the bike community of Lake County, that they have focused on building a track at the Six Sigma Winery, which was just recently used for the Northern and Southern California and Central California mountain bike team races this past weekend. They are still interested in using this other area that they kind of focused, I mean, limited amount of time and had the wet winter, and, you know, so they kind of had to go where their attention was drawn, and the opportunity of, you know, open space on private land. So that's kind of where that went. But the appropriateness of this new space is fantastic, and I would really fully support that opportunity. I think that the Westside Park Committee can get this done. We've been very successful through donations. We've got a pretty good history. It's been ongoing, and we're just getting things going. We're rolling along. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Anyone else?
First of all, my name is Carol Biggs. I'm a founding president of the Lake County Horse Council, and we just really wanted people to know that we bring a lot of money to the county and spend a lot of money in the county, and we're just so grateful to have some support and understanding that we need someplace to go and safely ride our horses and enjoy them. And I not only ride horses, but I drive horses. And most of us here, we were at Brassfield yesterday driving our various horses. And so I just am so grateful because I've wanted, it's been my dream, to really get behind a community arena. And it's been very heartbreaking that, you know, the fairgrounds just is not for us in. So thank you so much for your attention and your willingness to consider this. Thank you.
Okay, last chance. Bring it back to the council. Any last comments or questions?
I think Richard put it really well, that it is part of Lake County's heritage. I've gotten to go to a couple of, well, maybe just one, of the Horse Council meetings, and it's amazing. You know, I grew up in apartments and on military bases, so to be able to just see such a totally interesting world developed around the love and the care of horses, that relationship is super cool. So I'm really glad that it's one of the priorities of our council, to make sure that they have a space to continue that. It is an important part of Lake County.
Fully agree. Want to make a motion?
I would love to.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to approve the request to relocate the Equestrian Park to the CLMSD property on Highway 175 with the recommended conditions.
Second. Go ahead.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can go. Seriously, you need to invite them all.
Put it on the agenda.
All right, council communication. Oh, we have a last minute something?
I just would like to thank Dennis Rollins for all his hard work for the Westside Park Committee. He has made such a good opportunity.
Take him out for a drink. Thank you, Dennis. All right, Margaret, you want to start?
Oh, nothing further to report.
David, hope you feel better.
Thank you. I will be attending the League of California Cities City Attorney's Conference from Wednesday through Friday this week at no cost to the taxpayer.
Nice. Can we get a daily report, please?
I think you heard enough from me.
All right, Nick?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Chief?
Nothing tonight.
I'll just reiterate something Doug said earlier, just that the street tree project is moving forward. Contractors are on site this week working on the irrigation and the lamp posts. We should start seeing our first trees going in next Monday, and they'll be doing one block face at a time.
Are they here somewhere?
Not yet.
Not yet?
No, not yet. They'll be bringing them up next week.
Next week?
We've got a project schedule online, and they'll all be in prior to memorial festivities.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's a really important point. If anybody goes to, the businesses out there want to know what, when their block is going to be affected by the tree planting and everything, there's a whole schedule online that Kevin's put on there.
And Pannet with Main Street Association delivered that project schedule out directly to businesses, and we made it a nice, so hopefully some of them will be displaying in their windows as well.
Okay. Kelly?
Kelly, report.
Me. Councilmember Spur?
Went to legislative days earlier this month. I had no cost to the taxpayer. And it was quite informative, but I went through the legislative bodies, personnel, went into the assembly chambers, and we talked about all the different bills that they had for our area, and it was quite informative and a great thing to go to.
Is there a trade? Councilmember Prolet?
Nothing to report.
Member Barnes?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Turner?
I want to express appreciation to Richard and Mary for all the hours and hours of work that go into keeping that park in a state that everybody can actually use it and enjoy it.
You're welcome.
So, yeah, thank you. That's a lot of work.
It's two to four hours a day of trash doing and about six hours of mowing a week right now. From March through October. Thank you very much.
Did you ever think about getting sheep?
I don't think that the kids and their parents would really like what the sheep would leave them.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to point out that Clearlake High School took part in every 15 minutes last week. It was great to see so many agencies come together to put on such a big deal. And unfortunately, my daughter took part in it, and Chief came and told me that she was in a car crash and died. And as much as you know that it's not real, it is heartbreaking. And another student is amazing with video, and the video is up on my Facebook. You guys should take a look at it because it's probably going to be recognized that they did such... they did such a great job with it. But I think it was a good reminder for parents to set a good example for your kids and, and for the kids to really think twice about their actions. The kids, they, they know it's going to happen, but they don't know who or when and, and exactly what. And obviously they know when they're walking out to the street to sit in the bleachers, they know something's going to happen, but they don't know really who's out there. And Bella was in the front seat and that other passenger runs around and she looks and she goes, Bella, Bella. And Bella could hear the cry go, oh, because that was the first they realized who it was and one of the girls passed out and other people start crying. So that really affected them, which was hard, but hopefully we'll see our kids make good choices. So check out the video. Proud of all the kids and all the agencies worked so well together. Hope they do it every four years, so, you know, we won't see it for a while, but I think we'll see the impact for a while. So thanks for coming, everyone. Meeting adjourned.